I'd now like to call this February 2nd, 2012 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
Thank you. All right. Consider approval of agenda as presented. Any changes to the...
We have no changes.
All right. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Consider approval of minutes of the last council meeting held January 19th, 2012. Have motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance 111222 rezoning 1710 White Road from CG General Commercial to RS10 Single Family Residential and rezoning a portion of the adjoining property from RS10 Single Family Residential to CG General Commercial, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the properties proposed for rezoning are depicted on the screen. There's an aerial view and the current zoning. The two tracks involved are a small triangular piece here and a larger piece here. The intent here in this rezoning is to allow the property owner to subdivide off a house, which is located in the commercial zone portion of this larger track, and to combine a portion of the commercial, the larger track with the smaller track, this portion would be rezoned to RS10. The house would be, and that portion would be rezoned again to RS10, and then the small remaining sliver of this triangle track would be combined into this larger piece, and it would go to CG. There were no, have been no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right. Onto the consent agenda. Item four, set a date, March 1st, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 12201 rezoning 423 North Peachtree Avenue from MS Medical Services to UNV University, request submitted by Cookville Regional. Item five, consider awarding bids for wire and transformers from the electric department. And item six, consider awarding bids for asphalt milling paving, asphalt and mineral aggregate six-month contract from the Public Works Department. Do we have a motion for...
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the audience? All right. Seeing none? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Onto, on to new business. Item seven, consider resolution 120203 amending the city charter, city charter, charter article 14, section 1405, personal interest sponsors, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, over the years, we've had issues with this section of our charter, and the word in that section that gives us the problem is the word employee. It says that any local business that's owned by an employee or an employee's family, even that employee, even though that employee has no influence over that purchase or the department making the purchase, doesn't vote on it or anything, that would violate this provision of the charter. And what I'm proposing tonight is that we eliminate this wording in this section and just adopt state law, there are two sections of state law that apply. One is 12-4-101, and the other is 654-107. In 12-4-101, it says it is unlawful for any officer, committee member, director, or other person whose duty it is to vote for, let out, overlook, or in any manner to superintend any work or any contract in which any municipal corporation, and it named off all these different entities, shell or may be interested to be directly interested in any such contract. And in 654-107, says no person holding office under any municipal corporation shall during the time for which the person was elected or appointed be capable of contracting with any such corporation for the performance of any work that is to be paid for out of the treasury. So I think state law covers everything that our current charter covers, but it does not go as deep as the rank-and-file employee. And so that's what I would like, that I'm asking you to approve tonight, is this resolution that we would send to the state legislature to amend our charter to just adopt those two sections of Tennessee state law.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments from the council?
I'm curious, have there been problems with this in the past? I mean, as far as, as the employee relationship there?
Yes, there has, and sometimes we probably violate this code section and don't, this charter section and don't even know it. A secretary in one department, say Leisure Services, for example, her husband owns a parts store. I'm just using, he doesn't, but I'm just using as an example. Somebody in the electric department needs to go buy an auto part, and he goes to that parts store to buy the part. I mean, also to him, he's violated that. And then once we see that, you know, if we're aware of it, then we have to say, well, you can't shop there anymore. You know, have to go somewhere else. And there have, there have been occasions where it actually could cost the taxpayers more money, or we'd have to go outside the city to make the purchase. So I don't understand why that went as deep as employee.
Well, I think it makes sense to make it being in line with what the state law is, and makes it cleaner and easier to deal with. And, you know, as many employees as there are in the city of Cookville, I could see very easily how somebody would know that that store belonged to the wife of, you know, whatever. So, and I definitely don't want us spending more money by sending people out of town to buy something that they can buy in town. You know, let's keep our money here in Cookville.
Yeah. With as many employees as the city has, 400 plus, not everybody knows everybody, so this must have been written a long, long time ago when we were at most...
Well, probably in the 1960s when the charter was adopted.
Correct.
Of course, when we know, when we know that there is that, that potential conflict, we're always going to make sure that that's, we're getting the best price, or the best service, or whatever that we're going for. But I don't really think it's fair for somebody that owns a local business just because their wife works here at the city, or their husband works here at the city, to be totally locked out of doing business with the city.
I agree.
As long as it's fair and equitable to everybody.
I also agree with that.
I agree too.
All right. Just to be clear, I guess, I want to point out that this just really changes the employees' portion of that, and so any officer or elected official or director or anyone in the city still has the same conflict of interest that they have to abide by. So just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
Any, any other questions? Any comments from the audience? All right. Seeing none? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item eight, consider approval of declaration of protective covenants and restrictive covenants running with land for the Highlands Industrial Business Park, sponsors, Mr. Jim Shipley.
This, these covenants for the new business park are something that really have been worked on for, I guess, a couple of years. And lately, Mr. Joe Albright referencing the chamber, Melinda Kiefer, and I, and Greg Brown, and James Mills have all been through these and tried to pare them down to where they kind of make sense. We want to have a really nice business park. We don't want some old ugly steel building out there. Of course, I've always said, somebody comes in offering 500 jobs at $15 an hour, we'll say, well, sure. But anyway, let me go through real quickly what, what I consider to be the, the main points. There's quite a few prohibited uses in the park, residential dwellings, commercial incineration, junk yards, body or fender shops, wrecking and salvage yards, rubbish and garbage, treatment of hazardous, toxic radioactive waste, mining, rock quarry drilling, mobile or modular home sales, mini warehouses, wireless communication tower structures, billboards, cemeteries or mortuaries, or other activities that the developer, which is the city and the county and its sole discretion deems incompatible with the goals of the park. All raw materials and equipment shall be stored completely in enclosed buildings or shall otherwise be completely screened. Signs shall only contain the business name and their logo. They have to be indirectly illuminated and shall not be lighted from within unless it's specifically approved. And that each business shall have no more than one freestanding monument type sign per street frontage. There'll be no flashing, moving, or temporarily intermittently lighted signs. Pole signs are prohibited, and all outdoor wiring shall be underground, with the exception of the couple of electrics main line, which was going to cost us millions of dollars, so we couldn't do that. And all cable TV, telephone, internet, et cetera, shall surface. In other words, it has to be underground, but it has to surface every now and then. When it does, it has to go into a vault at ground level. And that's some language that we added today. Got one more slide, I think, James. Yeah, this is it. No building shall be constructed with wood framing. Exterior walls should be finished with natural stone brick or manufactured stone, split-faced, spit, I'll get it out in a minute, split-faced block or rib block, stucco-finished flat wall panel, foam-insulated flat panel with fiberstone, pre-cast concrete panels or tilt-up concrete panels. And we added this language today through, by Mr. Greg Brown of Public Works, that no grading is allowed within the floodplain without city approval. And I think that covers most of what we have in the covenants. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Comments?
Well, I just was looking over it, and I think it's great that we're going to encourage it to be pedestrian and cyclist-friendly. And the whole point behind all of this is to make it a pleasant place to see and be at, and also to look nice from the interstate as people pass by, and that's always important, I think.
I would encourage everybody to go out there and look at the progress that's being made.
Great.
You can pretty well, you can start to see what the bridge is going to look like that goes over the floodplain. It is coming along, and it's supposed to be ahead of schedule if it'll just quit raining.
I think this helps us to create an environment that will be attractive to people, to attract jobs to our city. And without this, we would be very behind everybody that's out there. And this is something that, that we've needed for a long time, and it's exciting to see it all come together.
Again, there are a lot more restrictions than what he covered, but he just hit the high point, so. And that's obviously for public record, if anybody wanted to see exactly what all is included in that. Comments or questions? Anything from the audience? You sure?
I'm going to have to stay because I don't, I won't pass because I don't know what we're talking about.
Okay.
We're on item eight.
I didn't hear the conversation, so I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, one abstained, motion carries.
All right. Onto item nine. Consider approval of land use restrictions for wetland mitigation at the Highlands Industrial Business Park, sponsors, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, part of the construction of the road, some wetlands were destroyed. Part of our permits with the Corps of Engineers and Department of Environment and Conservation were required to mitigate that. The side outline in red, it's 5.03 acres. That's also within the floodplain that you can see the shaded area, that's the Kane Creek floodplain. We're locating that in there where we're going to create hopefully five acres of wetlands to mitigate that. And the core and the T-deck, it's required us to place a deed restriction on this parcel to ensure that nobody else later on destroys the wetlands that we've created to mitigate. So that's why we're asking for the deed restriction on this. I'd request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Comments?
Mr. Brown, will that be a pond-like area, or will it just be a wetland?
It'll be a wetland. Just be a marshy area. We'll be planting some different trees in there. You just won't be able to do anything in there. It's just going to be a natural area. And it's within the floodplain, and I don't think we really want to do anything in that area, anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Brown, I found this fascinating reading. We, on the county, we had done some wetland mitigation for the airport, I believe, at one time. And we just, I perused it and didn't spend a lot of time, I didn't have a lot of information. So I appreciate all this in my packet. I did have a couple of questions, though, that, just for clarification, there's, there is this period of time that's going to, the wetlands that we, we're going to be providing for will have to be supervised, not supervised, tested on occasion, et cetera. Who does that? Is that the responsibility of us?
Usually we get somebody from tech. Ken Morgan has been doing our other wetland mitigation sites, and he does that on a yearly basis and tells us how many acres we have and what else we have to do. If something's not working right, he'll advise us on how to cure the problem, but...
Yeah. Because it was pretty, pretty clear that, I mean, if we don't fulfill 70% of grasses planted and 60% of trees planted, that we have to, we have to fix that. And I was just curious, who did all the, who did all the checking? Because I'm sure, I just didn't know.
We have to, we're actually required to do three and a half acres, so the five acres is just a little buffer, so if some of it doesn't actually turn into a wetland, we'll still have a little extra, so...
Yeah. I noticed that in the reading. We'll have, what we're doing, we're a little excess, so we'll probably, we have, we're bank, we've banked some land for future, future, if this comes up in the future, I guess.
Correct.
Well, we, no, not really. They're not going to let us do that, no. We'd hope they would let us do that, but you have to have a project that you're wanting to use it for, so this will just be for this, this project. And we're also using a half acre that never did turn into a wetland at Kane Creek, and they let us add this here as well, so. That'll take care of that one as well.
So if we have to do wetlands mitigation again, we'll, we'll have to start from the drawing board, so...
In another location, or...
We're not banking it, then? Okay.
No, that's correct.
Okay. I think, there's a lot of stuff here, and I'm just saying, you can see me flipping through here. The other question I had is that, it said that, you know, I noticed on the deed here that it recommended that we have title insurance, and I didn't see any, I didn't see any documentation that we do have title insurance. Do we have title insurance for this? Are we required to as a municipality?
Not, not as far as I'm concerned.
No, we don't.
I'm aware of, no. This is still part of the whole track. We're not separating this out right now.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I just was reading, reading this stuff, and it said that recommends title insurance. I just didn't, I didn't know if we did that, and...
Anytime you see a legal document, they recommend title insurance, I think. I don't know. We don't have title insurance.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from the audience? Comments? All right. Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 10, consider appointments to the Sewer Regulations Appeals Board, sponsors, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have two appointees that the council needs to appoint to our Sewer Regulations Appeals Board. This board was established by ordinance in 1998. Board is made up of five members, appointed to three-year terms, who shall not serve more than two full three-year terms without a one-year break. This board is set up to conduct any hearings and appeals that we make in our department. Since the board's been established, we have yet to have an appeal, so the board's never met. Daniel Locke and Martha Wells are the two board members that their terms are up. We've asked Dennis George, Martha's moved out of town, she took another job up in Kentucky somewhere. She was a chemistry professor at Tennessee Tech. We've asked Dennis George if he'd be willing to serve. He's the head of the Water Center, and he's agreed. Daniel Locke is the owner of Dixie Imperial Plating, and he's agreed to serve another term, and we'd recommend their appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council?
We're always grateful when people want to serve their city.
And this board's never met?
Nope.
So you sure all these people still live here?
Yes, we talked to them. It's a good thing.
Just making sure.
I think that's great that they've never had to meet.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Very nice.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 11, consider awarding bid for sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project, sponsors, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we do an annual sewer rehab project every year, which is made up of different, it's the line work. I think you guys approved a recent line work we did, and this is a manhole project that we're doing. The areas, you can see in your box outlined on the map, is the, sort of the manholes in the area we're working on this time. There's approximately about 15 or 50 manholes that'll be rehabilitated in this project. We've taken the bids. CTR coatings was a low bidder, $91,400. I've got a little video, probably 20 seconds, show you what they're going to do. And this is a typical, what we're talking about they'll do. I turned the sound off before you go down, you didn't have to hear it. But they go, they go down into the manhole, they spray up. It's called a silicone-modified polyurea for this method, and it basically, there's a three-layer system, and it basically builds a manhole back to a new top condition. It's a...
How often do you have to do this?
Some of the manholes are, some of the old brick manholes were some, they were probably put in the 30s, some of it. It just depends on the condition. Every, you know, we look at them in an area when we're working in those areas and go do and do an evaluation. Some of them will have cracks, there's water intrusion getting into certain places in it, so you just try to evaluate it that way. But it's, and you can have 1930 manholes that are still great.
I guess a lot of it depends on the traffic, basically, of all.
It depends a lot on the installation, the original installation and the method that's used.
This isn't going to help the way they're so uneven in the pavement, so...
No. There's ways to do that. We've thought about trying to come in and, like Broad Street, I think I hit one out there the other day, by Mikey's house. And there's companies that we can get in to sort of do that. It's not real expensive, and whether we may try to do that, get a list of those sometime and try to do something like that.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Any more questions? Comments?
Mr. Kelly, when would, when would they do this? When, once, once this gets approved?
Sometime this spring, they'll start and work through probably the first of the summer.
I want to come and watch.
Oh, well, big lad will let you down.
Kind of fascinating.
Tell you all about it.
They'll probably let you go down in the manhole. You've seen the video.
Well, they haven't let me do anything like that.
We've got all that equipment. If you'd like to go, we can, we can accommodate you.
You got a hard hat on.
We've got all the harnesses and so forth.
You showed us all the green dots and all. You have a ballpark. How many, how many manholes is that?
50. Approximately 50.
50?
Yes, about 50 manholes.
How many do we have in the city?
4,200, about roughly 40, approximately 4,200 manholes in the city. This will be about one, I guess that comes out to about close to 1% or so.
Wow. Interesting.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right. That's fairly quick. This is a portion, portion of our meeting where we open up the floor to citizens and/or delegations. Anybody wants to come forward, say anything on their mind, ask questions, comments? All we do is ask, come forward, state your name, and if you could hold it to three minutes, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is David Vanderkook, and I have a complaint against the codes department. They are refusing to enforce the city codes. I have a neighbor who has a junk pickup truck sitting next to his house and has been for a number of years. I have complained many times to the city about this, and nothing's been done. He also has a boat parked in his front yard. Yeah, he's at 326 Essex Road. Oh, he does not live there. He, that is his house, but he lives at 315 Essex. I wish the city would do something about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderkook. You have brought that to our attention, correct?
Yes, I've been to the codes department many times, and they originally had two cars. They moved one out finally, but, which was very looking of the two that were there. There was an old Chevy pickup that's full of rust.
Okay. Okay. What's, what's our procedure when we, when we ask?
I'm, I'm sure they've been out there several times. I don't have the paperwork in front, but we'll check on it tomorrow.
Okay. If you want to check back with us, give us, you know, sometime tomorrow afternoon or Monday, check back with us, so we can find out exactly what all is taking place. Anyone else? All right. Anything from the, from the council?
Mr. Mayor, the weather has been so nice when, when it hasn't been raining, but I happen to walk in Dogwood Park about six times a week, and it is very gratifying to me that every time I'm in that park, I see people in it, walking in it, you know, strolling their children, and it's just great to have that in the middle of our city, and such a beautiful addition. And every, every single time I go, I'm just filled with pride with what the city of Cookville does for the citizens of this area and for the citizens of Cookville. And I just always like to express something good about that, because that's really wonderful.
Thank you. Anything else? I wanted to point out a study that came out recently. I wanted to point out a, a study that came out recently. It's the Council for Community and Economic Research. It's the Cost of Living Index, and this is something to brag about, so I want everybody to pass the word. You can quote us on that one, Amy. The, this is 314 urban areas in the US, and the national average for cost of living, and it is based on six different components, housing, utilities, grocery, grocery items, transportation, healthcare, miscellaneous goods and services. Out of Tennessee, there were about 11 or 12 cities that were in this study, but 314 across the country. And I would like to point out that Cookville, Tennessee was ranked the sixth least expensive place to live out of 314 in this study. Now, I would like to say we were number one in Tennessee, but actually, we were a tenth of a point behind Memphis. They are the fifth least expensive. So second in Tennessee, but sixth nationwide of the 314 urban areas. Most expensive was New York, Honolulu, San Francisco, kind of, kind of the ones you would imagine.
I'd rather live in Cookville than Memphis.
Well, I probably would, too.
Me, too.
No, not probably, I would. But anyway, just wanted to point that out, that's something to brag about. I think that's pretty amazing. I know, I think several years ago, we got, we, maybe USA Today did a study, and we were the most affordable city, and we're, I guess we have some consistency there, so that's something to brag about.
That is something to brag about. That's great.
Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.